All right, it is time, it is six oh something, six o'clock?
Six oh three.
Six oh three, it's six oh three, and I will go ahead and call our meeting to order. All of the trustees are here in attendance except for Wesley, who was called away on some last minute business. So we'll miss him at this meeting, but we'll look forward to seeing him next time. So we're all in attendance and we will, our first order of business is to recess into closed session for approximately 60 minutes. Or, oh, do we have any, before we do that, I guess there wasn't any public comment on this.
Not on closed session, no.
On closed session, okay, so we will go ahead and recess then into closed session on anticipated litigation for significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine B. All right, welcome everyone, we are reconvening here in open session at seven thirteen P M. And we will resume our meeting in open session, starting with item C with the pledge of allegiance. But before we do the pledge of allegiance, I just wanted to take a really quick moment. I know that the pledge is often a time where teachers have conversations with students around civic engagement and civil society and what it means. And I know that we all, or many of us listened to the youth poet laureate Amanda Gorman's inaugural poem. So I just wanted to read a little section of it that stood out for me with respect to what we do here in serving our communities as a board of directors and a board of trustees and as a staff and as teachers in our community. So just a really small snippet and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So, "And yes, we are far from polished from the pristine, but that doesn't mean we are striving to form a union that is perfect. We are striving to form a union with purpose, to compose a country committed to all cultures, colors, characters, and conditions of man. And so we lift our gazes not to what stands between us, but what stands before us. We close the divide because we know to put our future first, we must put, we must first put our differences aside. We lay down our arms so we can reach out our arms to one another. We seek harm to none and harmony for all." And with that, for those of us who would like to also say the pledge of allegiance, let's go ahead now and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we're going to move on to adopting the agenda and the time allocations. Do any of my colleagues on the board have any amendments to the agenda or comments on the time allocations? Hearing none?
No.
I take a motion to adopt the agenda, or I'll move, I'll move to adopt the agenda, is there a second?
Second, Ryan.
Second, Ryan, okay, all in favor, Shelley, aye, Ryan?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
All right, and Wesley is not here this evening, he was called away, so the agenda has been adopted. All right, let's go on to communications, Marcy?
All right, thank you, so we did receive some public comments on our board meeting this evening. So they have all been posted to the agenda item here, so they're accessible to all of our community as well. And these are items on and not on the agenda, there were no public comment items related to our closed session. Agenda item today.
And as I will assume that all of the, the board members have been able to read those public comments and, and the comments on, on and not on the agenda. And so I know that, that we all take those very seriously and read them all the way up until right before board meetings as they do come in until three o'clock. We do take public comments up until three o'clock and then post them. So thank you very much for all of the public comments, and they are all posted in this area, both in the public comment and the correspondence. Even if they're related to other agenda items later on, they're all in this area of the board box. So the next item, D two is board announcements, I'm not sure if any, anyone from the board has an announcement to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shelley, can we go back to please, report out from closed session?
Oh, yes, thank you, yes, reporting out from closed session, there was nothing to report out from the closed session, there were no formal decisions in the closed session. It was just a discussion item, thank you, thank you for reminder. All right, so without any board announcements, we'll move on to correspondence and communication to the board. And I know in these virtual times, there's both, there's both public comment that is virtual and then there's correspondence that is also virtual. So Marcy, I don't know if you want to, if there's anything else to say on that?
Just any of those, the reason that they're organized the way that they are is a few came in before or right up until when the agenda was posted. And then others came in after, so we do have four total items here. Everything that came in after the agenda was posted on Friday is in one file.
Okay, great. And, oh, and then.
Oh, there it is.
Well, we do it twice, we have nothing to report out from closed session, we have it, we have it posted there. So there's nothing to report out from the closed session, which means that we can move right on to item E, presentation and action items. We have approximately 70 minutes for this part of our agenda and we have three presentation action items on our agenda here. So let's start with the first one, which is an update on the school reopening, the school reopening information. This is actually our thirteenth, well, this is our thirteenth update on this topic. There've been very regular updates, obviously there've been 13 of them. So this is the thirteenth update and looking forward to hearing how things are going.
Thank you, and so tonight we have a, with us in our presentation, Judith Berry, Brookside Principal, Matt Tanserit, White Hill Principal, Maria Lubomirsky, White Hill Assistant Principal, Julia Walcott, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Eric Sable, Director of Student Services, and myself. So thank you, and next slide, alrighty, so what we have here is, the great news is as of yesterday, the governor lifted the regional stay at home order. We are though in Marin County's risk reduction order, so that was effective immediately upon the governor lifting the regional stay at home. There is still a California travel advisory which strongly discourages non-essential travel, including to other states and countries. And any person arriving to California or who does travel outside of California and arrives back to their home county should quarantine for 10 days. Marin is in the purple tier, tier one, but the daily case rates, great news, do appear to be decreasing and scientists believe that the winter surge has crested. And so we are looking forward to the vaccine, COVID-19 vaccine, it is a two-shot vaccine. Educators are in phase one B, we had the great pleasure of having, in these priority levels here, our priority ones were able to receive, had four occasions in which they were able to receive the vaccine. Right now, the vaccine for educators is on pause while the county focuses on seventy-five plus residents, seventy-five years and older of our residents. And so we're looking forward to when we're able to resume with our priority levels two, three, and four in Ross Valley. And let's see, just as a reminder that to be placed back into the red tier, because we were in Marin County in the red tier at one time, we must meet the required COVID numbers for two consecutive weeks. And that would be a daily case rate for the red tier is between four and seven positive case rates over a 10-day, per 100,000 people over a 10-day period, and you have to remain in those areas for a total of two weeks before you actually get to move into that tier. So as Dr. Willis says, everyone has been making great sacrifices to bring this surge under control and it's paying off. And as we move back into the purple tier, it's critical to remember that the virus is still very active in our community. We could easily backslide if we let our guard down. With 7% of Marin residents vaccinated and the very limited weekly supplies, health officials note that the vaccine will play a limited role in preventing any surges soon, for the next two months, our everyday behaviors, more than the vaccine will help flatten the curve. And so continuing to distance where our face coverings and of course, practice hygiene. Any questions around this, that slide? All right, we'll do this slide and then we'll see if you have any questions. So we do have new COVID-19 and reopening of in-person instruction framework and public health guidance for K-12 schools in California. The blue up at the top where it says new CDPH guidelines is a live link, so anyone looking at our PowerPoint on the board docs would be able to access that link. And this is just a one snapshot, it's a 50-page document, and the good news is, is it's not really new to us. It is an update to the framework and very much synthesizes a lot of documents into one. And with Marin County having created its 30-point guidelines for schools, the state, it appears, did use Marin Counties as a template. And so in terms of the, the plans that we have to write and make revisions to, we're already very close, we're already there. But in terms of the classroom space, this is just one element of the guidelines that our schools must follow. And so we do need to maximize, maximize space between seating and desks, distancing the teacher and other staff desks at least six feet away from students and other staff desks, and distance student chairs at least six feet away from one another, except where six feet of distance is not possible after a good faith effort has been made. Under no circumstances should distance between student chairs be less than four feet. If six feet is not possible, it's recommended to optimize ventilation, so we have done that in Ross Valley. All of our ventilation HVAC systems are set to the maximum capacity for airflow in and out of the rooms. And we have also put air purifiers in each of our classrooms and office spaces. And there also, we are, have done this and are doing it now, of course, with our winter weather and our atmospheric rivers we're experiencing right now, considering and utilizing outdoor and indoor space options as we are able to have our students in schools. And so along with this guidelines, as I mentioned, we do need to have in place our industrial illness protection plan, which we have revised. And within that, there is a requirement by Callosia, that there's a prevention, prevention plan that we have created. And thank you, Chris Carson, our CDO for taking the lead on that, and that will be an addendum to our IIPP. And then with that, there also is a school safety plan that the state has developed, there's a check sheet. So the great news, as I mentioned, with Marin County's 30-point guidelines and our site-specific safety protection plans that are in place, we're making a couple of revisions to those at each of the school sites, utilizing their task forces that they have in place. And the county, I think I reported this a couple of board meetings ago, where there were some guideline changes to eight, nineteen, and twenty-four. So those are all being worked on at the sites, we have a deadline of February one, which is this coming Monday, to get all of our plans uploaded to our website as well as sent off to the state. And then there was a new requirement too, that we need to be able to report to the state how our schools are open. And so Julia Walcott, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction submitted the first report yesterday, Monday, and then we'll be doing that in accordance with the requirements there. And whether there are changes or not, you have to do it as scheduled. So I think that's it for those two, any questions so far? Alrighty, Madam Maria, you're up.
Marcy, just a quick question, just a, so all of this information, the school site safety protection plans, people can find those on the school websites? And on the, could you just maybe tell people where they can find all this information on?
On our district website, we added a, a while ago now, at least two, maybe three months ago, a COVID-19 page. And on that page, there are a number of items listed there, so we have our updates, we have all of our school site protection plans. We also have the tier levels that the state has set forth in their blueprint for a safer economy. And then within that, all of the Marin County exposure protocols, decision trees, they're all housed there. And thank you, Sean Maher and Chris Carson, Sean Maher, our Director of IT, and Chris Carson, my CDO, who work together to put a new item on each of the school sites pages, which when a parent or community member goes on to the school site, it will direct them right to our COVID-19 page and therefore be able to access all of the site plans. Initially, in Marin County, as part of the reopening efforts, we had to create and have finalized and take to the county health department to review our SSSPPs, and those were all done at the end of September, and they were posted on our district website in that location that I mentioned. So everything is housed there, as I mentioned, when we have, all of our school sites have completed their task force work revisions, we will again get those updated on to the county, I'm sorry, up to the, we'll send them to the county and we'll also get them posted to our district website on that COVID-19 page.
Great, thanks so much.
You bet.
All right, thank you, Marcy, for having us back to showcase what White Hill's been doing. So today, I think everyone knows that last week, last Tuesday, we welcomed our seventh and eighth grade students on campus for hybrid. So it was the first time since March 13th that we had all three grades on our campus, it was an amazing start. We have this short video to share and then Maria's gonna kind of, Maria Lubomirsky, our amazing assistant principal, is gonna go over some of the things that we did to try to help keep White Hill safe, and then I'm gonna share some new ideas with our sixth grade.
Okay, so what's, what do you like so far about in-person hybrid?
Um, but I just get to see my friends that I haven't seen in a while, like in person, and, but I get to see some of my teachers. But I, so if I need to ask some questions, it's like easier for me to ask some questions like on, in person instead of on Zoom. Just because they have like technical difficulties or something like that, it's just easier to do school when you're in person.
So what do you like about in-person hybrid?
What I like about in-person hybrid is that I get to see people that I haven't seen for a long time, and it's a better learning experience than it was before.
So if you've spent any time with middle school students, you know that they can't keep their hands off of each other, which is why you see that scene in the quad that looks a little dystopian with all the dashes, but those are the students standing on their dashes. It's part of our protocol, protocols. Matt and I joke that we're gonna keep some of these because it's actually incredibly orderly. But anyway, what you see there is where the students stand in the morning in between classes. When they arrive at school, we have hand washing stations, they wash their hands, stand on their dash. Then we have these bells we, that we dismiss students by half. We have a bell that's kind of a chime, it dismisses the A, the kids with last names A to M. And then another bell, we call the, the airplane seatbelt bell, it's just a kind of a one ding that excuses N to Z. And what that does is allow the, the movement through the school, we have kind of a one-way. We ask them to always enter from the outside and go up certain stairs and down certain stairs. And they're doing that in half the number and really quarter number because we're there halftime by dismissing them in the two waves, and that's coming out, going into class and coming out. So it's actually worked really well, that you saw the video there, it was last week, and it's so far so good. We have, you know, rules around the bathrooms and, and of course, everyone's wearing their masks. They can take off for a quick snack and put them back on, but only outside. So just like you heard the kids in the video, I, it's been pretty positive. And we had a little debrief with the stu, with the departments yesterday and the teachers, I'd say the most common feedback was it was just so great to see the kids, see them in pay, in face-to-face, see them in person, because they can engage and they can engage the kids when they're, they're not being engaged because it's really hard to reach through a computer screen for that, and it's just, everything's just easier and they just, they just really like it. So we're excited about this, so we're excited about continuing it and building on it.
So thank you, Maria, this is just, I think we've seen the stage return from White Hill from us for a while now. And now we're like in, starting the fifth phase maybe, and I was looking at this slide today and just wondering how many phases we're gonna end up having by the end of the school year. But starting in October, our sixth grade teachers have really been, you know, our baseline. And they have been so steady and consistent in their approach, in their demeanor, when this was really hang, anxiety, you know, anxiety provoking. They were really the steady group on our campus that kind of set the stage and set the tone and made everyone else comfortable to allow them to realize that, you know, we can do this in a safe way. So starting in October with the sixth grade hybrid to the learning hubs, to the open learning hubs, to now the three-by-three model, and we're now looking to hopefully expand our sixth grade, and we have a pretty good idea of how we're going to do that. And I met with our sixth grade team yesterday, and the schedule that we are going to be sharing right now is, is kind of a rough draft. We're still playing with some of the particulars of the times, but we feel that this, something like this is gonna be shared with the families very, very soon. So we can look at the next slide, please. And basically, what we, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna extend the sixth grade day by one hour. And how we're going to do that is going to be the easiest way possible to ease the transition. And that is, in the mornings, our students see their core teachers when, when they're on campus. So we're gonna extend their core class time by 15 minutes each. And then one of the things that we've really missed out on in sixth grade is the advisory time since they've returned to on-campus. And that advisory time, we utilize at White Hill for a variety of ways. One is that's where we really set the foundation for community building and our social emotional learning work. So usually in a traditional school year, at least one day a week, we would be doing community circles and SCL work. So when we went back to in-person, we kind of lost some of that. So we're looking forward to bringing that back, at least 30 minutes a day. In addition to the, the community building and the SCL work, that's also a time for our students to have office hours, they can Zoom. Something, you know, last school year, we did not do across campus, we walked across campus, and now we can Zoom for extra help. Teachers can use that as office hours, students can also use that time to do some of their asynchronous work for their elective wheel or their zero-period class. So we're looking forward to starting this schedule right after the mid-winter break. So that would be, I think, February 22nd, I think, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I think that's when it is. So yeah, we're really, really excited, again, our sixth grade teachers have just been so consistent in their approach and their demeanor and how they've handled this being, I think, the first general ed teachers in the district to go back into hybrid. I think we started right the week before the elementaries, so they've been at it, they're as close to pros as they can be for hybrid, so they're ready to expand a little bit. So yeah, we're really excited about it, and if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey Matt, this is Ryan, this is really exciting. I mean, I don't know if it's more exciting just to see the video of all the kids on the dots and the fact that kids that age do actually listen. But the fact that, you know, the energy that's, you know, you just see kids riding home with masks and you see kids going to school, it must be an amazing feeling for you and your staff to get back to the business of kids. And, and, and it's, it's just, there's been a lot of, there's been criticism to our school district for not doing it fast enough. And then there's been others, people saying you're not doing it slow enough, but what really is here is a ton of thought and a ton of work and, and a ton of buy-in from not only, you know, all the teachers, but the kids. And it's, it's, it's really, it's fun as a parent, it's me, it's even more impressive as a board member, great job.
Thank you, and I will say that, and I put this in a, in the Wildcat rap to all of our families, that the students and what they have done and what they've bought in, like you just mentioned, to these safety protocols and that attention to those details has been amazing, and the parents as well. I, for once, I think all the parents watched our orientation video because the traffic, at the end of the day, they're following instructions, which is really awesome. And for us to dismiss all our students within 15 minutes in seventh and eighth grade just is, goes to that attention to detail that we think is really important for everyone, for our staff and students to remain safe. So we do appreciate it and it's great to see everybody, the teachers, you know, we had teachers today saying, oh my God, this is what it feels like to be in the classroom again. Like this is what school's supposed to feel like, and it's not perfect, you know, there are growing pains with the hybrid and there's unique things that are, that we, we learn every day, but it does, the energy, the energy with the calmness has been really, really nice to see.
I also just wanted to add appreciation for this, just being able to again, look at this schedule because it really highlights the, the work that the teachers are doing to do that concurrent learning between the rumors and the zoomers. And you can really see how the light blue and the dark blue, those kids are together for the lesson launch. And so I just wanted to say thank you to our teachers because it feels like they've gone that extra distance to really make that integrated learning and that kind of, the flow that goes on there with, with that by having, even the students, when they're not physically on campus, they're still synchronously connected through their distance learning, and I know that that takes a whole lot from the teachers. So I really wanted to just appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think, Shelley, that's an awesome point to make, and you know, that lesson launch is a minimum. A lot of our teachers are utilizing, depending on the lesson, depending on the day, depending on the topic in the class, and the flow of the lesson, sometimes the students will be on for much longer than the lesson launch, it just really depends, and that gives it that actual classroom feel where our teachers are making decisions on the fly sometimes, like they would in a normal school site. So that flexibility is really important, and it does, you know, the concurrent, there's a lot of hesitation about the concurrent teaching and there are some lessons that don't fit concurrently as well as others. But I will say that when you, you know, walk through a classroom now, as Maria and I walk through and we see teachers concurrently teaching and they have the Zoom on, and the students that are at home with the 15 or 14 students in the classroom, there is a classroom community there, and it feels as close to the real thing as we can feel during this unique time. So it does feel good, so thank you for recognizing that.
Matt, I just, I just wanted to say, as a parent of a seventh grader, I had a really upfront seat for this experience. And there were things that I was dreading, as I'm sure most parents were, but things that I was dreading have never materialized, thankfully. Like drop-offs, pickups, those have been so smooth, and then watching the kids line up and like actually do those things, it's just like eye-opening, grabby as a parent, because I don't think I could get them to do that, it was my family. But I, you know, I've been impressed with how the students have adapted to it and how the parents, you know, the, the car lines, like, yes, we're all in line, but it goes so quickly compared to what I was expecting. And I do notice that my, my seventh grader is having those lessons, I mean, he's not a sixth grader, so it's slightly different, but when there's like the room and the Zoom, those, those lessons are going on beyond what I had expected or, you know, what's listed on there. And it does create a sense of community for the children, and I'm noticing that, you know, he'll be laughing at something that someone in the classroom is doing that he saw on Zoom or vice versa, and so I'll hear about that. And it's, I think it's been an unexpected benefit of having that, that connection between the classroom and the home still exist. And I'm so. And I'm so thankful that the kids and the teachers are able to foster that despite the distance and over the time. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think it's, it's also interesting, you know, there's a lot of times when you hear people that teach in middle school or work at middle school or have middle school age students, they say, oh, well, that's just how middle school students are. And Maria and I always joke about that and we always say, that's how we allow them to be and we want them to be. I'm not trying to control anyone, but right now we do need some control. And by putting these things in place and being honest and just being authentic with our students, they are really responding. And like you said, they're, you saw that first video, the students are on their dash. You know, we've listened to some other meetings with other middle school people and they're saying how their eighth graders don't, they they can't keep their hands off each other. And Maria and I are thinking, well, what are they doing? Because our users are doing it, we have the best school ever because our kids are keeping their hands to themselves. So it is possible and those expectations are a big part of it.
I would just add like, thank you and and bravo on all what you are doing. And I'm going to start implementing these dots in my own house because as soon as I come home, they don't follow the rules anymore. But I can see them on those videos doing it well over there. So thank you very much to all of you, like teachers, you and the the staff, the, you know, the cleaning, the maintenance of all your the buildings. So thank you to everybody. It has been a great week.
Alrighty, and now to elementary or TK through fifth grades is we've been reporting a few meetings about looking at an expanded hybrid model. So expanding our instructional day into the afternoon. So for a while, we had one big stumbling block and that was looking at the length of time that we can have the kids on campus at elementary without needing to institute or implement a lunch period. And one of the big stumbling blocks when we were looking at that was in looking at our classified openings for a new time supervision. And ensuring that we would have enough supervision for the students so that our teachers could have their lunch break. And going back to the drawing board and continuing to look at that because we still have no applicants for our open positions. And we need to get creative once again to look at potentially making a schedule that would work despite some of the limitations that we are facing. And so looking at a draft schedule and we have found and just to piggyback on what was said about White Hill. It is absolutely awesome and true when we talk about with, when we were looking at and worried about going into in person. Would we have to make adjustments to our operations? And that had to do with possibly cleaning schedules and the situations we might need to make adjustments to around face covering. Some provide extra training and reminders and it just, it hasn't happened. The cooperation we have had from all of our students and families to be really mindful about not sending their children to school ill. And making sure that they're available to pick up if they are. Our elementary students too are doing a fantastic job following the distancing and the facial coverings and having the systems in place for hand washing. And of course, with all of the support, we wouldn't be able to do this if it weren't for the support of all of our teachers and our classified employees. Every single person on the campuses who helped to ensure that our in person models are working. And so we're not really needing to make, you know, we we fixed that one operations adjustments. There's, there's really not much we have needed to do at all just because of our work that we did in the summer planning and thinking about every element of what we would do throughout the school year, no matter any of our five phases of our face return. And the good news is the county is moving in the right direction in terms of of cases. And then our testing, it's been regular and we are happy with the 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 plan that we have. All of our employees, even though it's a requirement to be tested at least once monthly. All of our employees have the opportunity to get tested every other week. And we are moving into a weekly testing schedule also for anybody who would like. And then we are looking at also being able to provide an opportunity for our students to be tested here in the district. Last couple of meetings reported on the availability countywide for testing. And now we'll be able, we're looking at starting that within the district. And then, as I mentioned in the earlier slide around vaccine availability, so we're looking for that to be picking back up. We do know that our county health department in collaboration with Marin County Office of Ed and all of the school districts in Marin is wherever and whenever possible prioritizing getting our educators vaccinated. And one of the things that we do know is that our systems, our protocols are working. We have been able to show, as many of you may have by now checked out our dashboard on our district website where we're monitoring our exposures and positive cases. With everything that we have in place and what the science is showing that schools are a safe place to be. That looking at just our data alone, we are very proud to see that we have only one suspected school transmission. And that is much lower, even just all schools, not just Ross Valley, but all schools having a really low transmission rate. When compared against the community based transmissions. So we have been able to show that our schools are safe places to be. And what we also know is that the way that we're operating our current hybrid model in elementary and Julia is going to go over this a little bit more in detail, so I won't do much here. But is we do have an overall amount of instructional minutes for our in person as well as our virtual program. And moving into phase three will allow us to have our students on campus longer, which will also help to mitigate the amount of time that they might be spending outside of school in other types of activities. Because we do know in normal school times and when school's out at 3:10, that students pretty much go home or to a designated childcare provider or to to an activity. And so just by the nature of this pandemic, it is required families to find other means of activities or daycare for their children that they haven't had to have previously. And along with that, our hybrid 3.1 extended model is just part of that phase in our full phased reopening. And so we are hopeful that sometime this school year moving in, we will be able to move into phase four. Some of the things that we know that we would need to do, being able to move into a five day a week model of a shortened day or modified day in which we have all students is we would need to revisit our memorandum of understanding, MOU with our teachers and classified employees related to what we have right now is currently six feet and half class size. And then also looking at an analysis of our class ratios of in person to full distance learners. That's another thing that we're proud of in Ross Valley is being able to, as was talked about in the White Hill. Part of the presentation is that learning that it's the heavy lift that the teachers are doing to be able to provide that concurrent instruction for the rumors and the zoomers. And that is one thing that we know from also at the beginning of the year when we were talking or surveying our families and getting input from them. They were hoping to, as we move from a virtual learning only academy into a hybrid, that we would minimize the number of teacher changes that students might have to be able to provide that consistency for those students throughout the the school year. So that's as we enter into our phase 3.1, still continuing to work on phase four, what that might look like. And hopefully sometime during the school year, we will be able to get there. But those are some elements that we'll need to work on. Any questions before we move into the next slide? Alrighty, Judith or Shelley, do you have something? No, not yet. Okay.
So I want to echo everyone's appreciation for the team effort that it's taken to do what we've been doing so far and what we will continue to do. And that starts with the leadership team, our certificated and classified staff who are doing a lot of heavy lifting on campus. And then, of course, our families from home with all that they're doing to help make this happen. And then our students, I'm amazed as an elementary school principal about what I see every day in all of us putting this forth. So we've reported at previous board meeting meetings about our extended hybrid model. And this is a draft schedule of what our day will look like with extended time on campus. We're in discussion with our teacher leadership teams about the details of the schedule, schedule around what kind of extension makes the most sense. This includes the length of the breaks, the length of the day, restructuring our AMP classes, the timing of these classes, as well as how we're providing targeted support to virtual learners that are most in need. And that would be including our cohort C students. It's important to keep in mind that our, we have an updated county guideline number 24. And there are some changes to it, but it's an important part of everything we're doing. And that is that all staff and students are required to wear face coverings while they're in the classroom and on campus, unless there's a medical or behavioral contradiction or exemption. And our students are doing a great job with this from grades TK through second. They're supported, they're taught how to wear them properly. And specific outdoor and appropriately distanced activities are scheduled for students at all grade levels so that they can have breaks where they can remove their face coverings for brief periods of time. I'm going to hand it over to Julia for the next slide.
Awesome. Thank you, Judith. So the next few slides are here just to talk a little bit more of the complexities of our district during this time. And this first one here represents the amount of time that students have with their teachers where they are concurrently or at the same time there with their teachers and have that visual of their teachers. And that can happen two different ways. That can happen through in person instruction, which at the moment takes place on two days a week for our cohort A and our cohort B and goes from 8:30 to noon. And then it also happens later in the day through live synchronous instruction. So that's when the teachers on a Zoom or a Google Meet and working with kids at home. And then, of course, as Matt and Judith have both been talking about, our teachers are doing a lot of concurrent teaching. So when you see this kind of tally of minutes here, on Mondays, the students are doing lots of virtual learning, not just, not just 120 minutes, but of that entire day, a minimum of 120 minutes would be live, live synchronous instruction with their teachers. And then on in person days, they've got about the two days a week would add to a total of 420 minutes for the, for the two days combined. And then on their virtual days of those 420 minutes, there's another 240 minutes there that where the teacher is zooming out and that can be that lesson launch. And of course, it's not always 15 minutes at the beginning of each lesson. Sometimes it extends to the whole lesson. Sometimes it might be a little bit shorter. It really depends on the content of the day, on what's appropriate for the kids. But basically, right now, we're at about a little over 13 hours a week minimum of live instruction for our students. And then, as we talk about extending the day, we would be adding something like, we're not sure yet, an hour to each of those in person days, bringing us up to about 15 hours. Any questions on instructional minutes? And then I should say that we actually have far more instructional minutes if you add all of our asynchronous minutes. So all of that independent time that students are spending on schoolwork or their teachers have introduced a lesson and then asked the students, for example, to go and write or to go and work on some mathematics. That independent time is asynchronous and those minutes I didn't include in in these charts because I wanted to give you more the sense of our live minutes.
Hi, Julia. I have a quick question.
Yep.
So this is great. I like seeing the more in person minutes. I think for, you know, the TK through five, it's so important to be in front with a teacher. It's such a different learning experience and I I love seeing the the higher number of minutes. So you, it looks like you had to get creative. So where is this extra time coming from? I'm curious.
Which extra time specifically, you mean for the extended model or?
Yeah, for the extended model.
So for the extended model, that's that idea of that phase 3.1, where if we currently our day ends at noon, if we extend an hour till one o'clock, then we're going to have an increase in the number of in person minutes and that's where that's going to increase. And then, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a little bit hard to follow from here because there's so many different minute places where we pull the minutes from. But this is really just that attempt of attempt to answer the question up when we really look at live minutes. Whereas students are either in front of a teacher in the classroom or in front of a teacher in their home. What does that all add up to? All right. And then we've already talked a little bit this evening about our cohort C. And these are our students who are on full virtual learning mode. And so we took a look at our enrollment and took a look at exactly how many students in every classroom in the district is on full virtual learning mode. And these are percentages from site to site. You can see a pretty big range here in percentages overall across the district. We're at 29%. So more than a quarter, less than a third of our students are on full virtual learning, in full virtual learning mode. And then you can see that, that, for example, Manor has a much higher percentage. But there's a little more information that's important to understand here. So if we kind of go back in time and think about when we were working really hard to launch our hybrid instruction and we were having some issues around staffing and trying to figure out how to move things forward. What allowed us to move forward was having some of our teachers who weren't going to be returning to the classroom during this time go on to full, full virtual learning. And when that happened, we also had families who made a decision that they would prefer to stay with their child's teacher who the child had gotten to know through all of our distance learning that had been happening over the course of the year, rather than move to another classroom or even more likely have a new teacher that is new to the district. And a little bit hard to find frankly, right now during this, this time. And so those decisions were made. So that's a part of why you see such different percentages across the district. And then Brookside does have one teacher on full virtual learning and the same for Wade Thomas. And then this chart gives you even more information. And it breaks down by numbers, each of the grade levels and each of the sites. And so where you see these really big numbers, Manor has a virtual learning teacher at first grade, at third grade and at fifth grade. Wade Thomas has a fourth grade and Brookside has a fifth grade. And then if we add by grade level, all of our virtual learners, and then we think about class size and we do a little math, we determine how many teachers we would need to have in full virtual learning mode in order to serve all of our virtual learners. And this is where it just gets really complex and hard. We'd, we've got five, we'd need another six. Or actually another seven, sorry. Which is not something that we can afford. And then if you look at how the numbers are scattered around, so for example, for example, at the third grade level, you can have this virtual learning teacher here at Manor. But when you add these together, that makes that second virtual learning class. And then you would have to ask yourself, well, do we make this teacher a full virtual learning teacher? And then move all of these kids over here and move all of these kids over here to another site and away from their teacher during a really difficult year. That makes that tricky as well. So that is just to give you a little bit of a better sense of where we are with our cohort C. And just reminding us, you know, as Marcy said, we've done, I think, a really beautiful job of supporting our virtual learners and our teachers have done an amazing job of supporting both rumors and zoomers at the same time. All right, Eric.
All right. I really appreciate all the hard work that our colleagues have put into not only the information in this presentation, but of course, all the efforts from the start of this school year. And we can extend that back to mid March of 2020, when we had to close our doors due to the onset of the pandemic. One thing that has been a part of the conversation across the county, the state, the country, if not around the world, since the pandemic began and schools closed last spring is what model to choose, you know, what's the best way to do it? And I just read this week, maybe over the weekend in the New York Times, an article called 13,000 school districts in the United States, 13,000 ways to address the pandemic. And while that might not be entirely accurate, I think what it points to is the fact I think what it points to is the fact that school districts, based on the dynamics of their community, of their schools, of their staff, of their students, of their, their composition, urban, suburban, rural, et cetera. Everyone is unique and different. And even in a small county like Marin that has over 17 or 18 different school districts, some large, some very small. We're all different and we all continue to learn from each other and lean on each other and work with each other to do what we're here to do, which is serve our students. Sharing ideas, sharing resources as best we can, trying to work through issues and challenges. In my role overseeing special education, for example, I'm in contact with directors multiple times every week. You know, how can we provide a particular service? Sometimes we've had to talk about how we can, you know, contract a particular kind of service that, that we don't staff. For example, again, small districts can't staff every last need. So that's going to continue to be the case all the way through till the end of the pandemic. And of course, continuing on into normal times where that spirit of collaboration is going to continue. But it is important for us to address, as my colleagues have very eloquently done, why it is that we have the model we do and not others. And in a small county like Marin, it can be very easy to look a district or two over and to say, hey, they're doing this. Why aren't we? So just a couple of thoughts about some other models. One is the AMPM model. And that model has students coming to school for possibly five times a week, either for a morning session or for an afternoon session. And I happen to know quite a bit about this model because I'm a parent in the Larkspur Courted Madera School District, where I also worked for the last six years in administration. And so three to four times a week, I'm taking my eighth grader to school in the morning to drop her off. And then my little fourth grader is a part of the PM cohort. So she either gets a ride or bikes over to her school in the afternoon. But Ross Valley School District won't be transitioning to the AMPM model for a number of reasons. That typically districts who've adopted this model have specifically designated cohort C teachers whereby, as Julia pointed out really well, most of our cohort C kiddos are incorporated in with teachers that are working with both A and B cohort kids. Also too, as we've just talked about, we're looking to lengthen our instructional day to get our students more time on campus for in-person learning. And an AMPM model doesn't allow for that since that middle part of the day typically in an AMPM model has to be dedicated to cleaning every single classroom, which is a monumental task. The amount of synchronous time with the teacher would decrease. So in the case of my own kids, for example, they have their three hours per day with their teachers, which is wonderful time, valuable learning time. But when they're back at home, the bulk of that time is asynchronous self-directed work. With the exception of my middle schooler, who has a little bit of elective time in my elementary school kiddo, who has also a little bit of AMP time. So anyway, that synchronous time with teachers decreases quite a bit because when that morning group is there, the afternoon group is at home doing independent work. Also, a challenge that we have on the staffing front, we've talked about that a bit, is having that consistent custodial support required for those daily cleanings of every single classroom. Again, a monumental task and our hats go off to those workers, to those custodians that have to do that. But that would be a true challenge for us to be able to do on a daily basis to ensure safety for staff and students and community. And also too, it'd be a holistic and fundamental shift in how we've structured based on lots of input from staff, from community, on how we put together the instructional week. So scheduling an AB would present any number of different challenges, including who's going to be that cohort that goes in the afternoon. And again, that, that would be something that would present a lot of challenges and hurdles. But again, that said, like all models, AMPM has its benefits and it also has its challenges. There's another model that, again, other neighboring districts are employing the A week and B week. So I believe, for example, Kent Field, Group A comes five days this week and then next week they stay home and Group B comes to school. So we really kind of thought about this quite seriously this past summer and did a very thorough survey. And the results are right here for us to analyze. And a big majority of teachers said that instead of that, they prefer what we currently have, the eight-day B-day model. And again, of the parents we surveyed, 78, almost 78% preferred again the eight-day B-day. And why is that? Well, it's, it's hard to do things like structuring daycare when it's a week on and a week off. Daycare providers don't necessarily have all the flexibility in the world. And so that was a consideration for why people so strongly preferred AB. And so again, the hard and patient work of assessing the interests and needs of our staff and community gave rise to this AB model. And we're really proud to be able to build upon it and continue to progress and move and grow. And one last thing too, that's important to understand as we maybe are having some conversations out in the community comparing Ross Valley Schools with other districts out there. You know, another key neighboring district partner that we have is Loganitas. Those Loganitas students feed into high school 1327. When I worked there for six and a half years, I had the pleasure and privilege to work with our Ross Valley kiddos, the Loganitas kids. You know, but they have yet to return to any form of in-person learning and that's their journey. And we, we support them. And certainly, if and when they want our help or support in thinking about how to structure a return to in-person hybrid learning, Ross Valley School District is going to be there in partnership. I want to make sure to take a little time if there are any questions about this.
Marie here. No question specifically, Eric. I just want to thank you for putting this slide together that I think remind all of us a little bit what happened last summer. And I think we, we might have a little bit forgotten, all of us, to be honest, about why we choose one and not the other. And that puts things into perspective. So thank you for reminding that to all of us as a, as a point of conversation for where we are right now as a community. Thank you.
And Eric, I just wanted to, just quick clarification. So the AMP model, AMPM model, the way you've described it, that's like a flip-flop model where the teacher basically is teaching the same subject twice in a day. So they might teach a math lesson in the morning and then they repeat that math lesson in the afternoon. And that's why that teacher's not available for the synchronous time for the other students because they're teaching the same subject. So is that, is that what, it's like, that's what's going on with that model?
That's exactly right. So for example, at my former school hall middle, the teachers there will have three periods in the morning that they teach to that, that group, the AM group. Those kids go home and there's the midday break and then the PM children come. They've been doing asynchronous independent work during the morning. And now the teachers repeat those lessons from the morning. And so again, that's, that's the particular structure of how they've done it. Again, their work has been really impressive. And my hat goes off to them as it does to every educator that's having to, you know, manage and navigate and do their jobs in the midst of these challenges. So they, yes, they're repeating the, the morning lesson when those kids come in the afternoon.
And so that makes sense to me now, that second bullet point about the instructional day lengthening because you have to give equitable time to both cohorts. So you couldn't lengthen one cohort during the day and shorten the other cohort. So that makes sense why the switching or lengthening, lengthening the instructional day with an AMPM now doesn't quite work because you're giving equitable time between the AM and the PM, whereas we're doing it equitable time between the day, Monday and Wednesday kind of, that's how the cohorts are getting the same instructional minutes. So that's helpful to understand that flipping.
Thank you.
RC? Thank you. All right. And just to wrap up, as we are here still in the middle of the 2021 school year, just as we do for every other school year, as we start planning for the following. So what is 2021 going to look like? We don't know for sure yet, but we certainly are planning for a full return with in-person instruction, five days per week with regular school hours. And of course, we don't know yet what guidelines might be in place by the county and the state, but whatever they follow or whatever they are, we will be sure that we will need to follow them. And at the minimum, what we do anticipate is that the protocols around potentially mask wearing and, and of course, hand washing will probably be with us for quite some time. And then just for any families who, for their own particular needs, may need distance learning on into the 2120 school year, will that be an option? So as we get closer and have a better understanding of our families who'll be with us, we'll have, of course, our new kindergartners joining us and possibly new families at other grade levels as well that we're not sure, but we do anticipate if there's a need for VLA, we of course would want to be able to provide that for our families for next year as well. So stay tuned for more information and details as we start looking forward to next year as we're also continuing to plan for the remainder of this year. All right. So that I think takes us to the end. Any questions or answers about our school reopening update tonight?
I was just going to say, I appreciate you with presentations like this, giving us opportunities in between to ask our questions. So I don't know if there's any other overarching questions that any board members have. This is just a discussion and informational item, so we don't have any decisions or anything to make on this. And then we can keep going. And again, I appreciate, I know this is the 13th one and I know you all staff people might, it's, but it is very helpful to have some refresher, Marie, as you mentioned, to remind us kind of where we've come from and where we're headed. So I really appreciate you all taking the time to continue to do the updates and periodically also do a little retrospective. I know we don't do that every single time, but they are recorded and they are on the website. So if anybody wanted to go back to prior presentations, I know we have some of those uploaded on the website and that we will continue to do regular updates. So thank you.
And also something that we're going to do is that we had, we've gotten away from for a while, but beginning this week, we will send out to our staff and families who weren't able to be on tonight's meeting the link to the recording. And this time going forward, it'll be the link to the video recording. So not just the audio, folks will have access to, but it'll just be this particular agenda item will be included in the link along with a PowerPoint presentation. And so with just a couple of bullets as an overarching of, here are the main points of what was covered in this particular evenings, but going forward in any board meeting update. So that should be helpful to families and staff members who aren't able to make it on to the particular board meeting.
Great. Thank you very much.
Very welcome. All righty. So I'll begin sharing my screen again to get back to the agenda. So we're seeing the agenda again.
Great. And so we are, we'll move, go ahead and move on to item E2, which is the annual audit reports for the 2019-20 school year.
Yes. I'd like to thank Board President Hamilton, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Trahan for the opportunity to discuss the audit reports this evening. We do have three financial audits that we complete each year. And the three financial audits are the district's financial audit, which is an audit of all of our funds, including our bond funds. The other two audits are required audits that are a result of the Measure A Proposition 39 Geo Bond that was approved by the voters of the Ross Valley School District. And with that, we have to conduct a financial audit specifically of the general obligation bond funds as well as what's called a performance audit of the Measure A bond funds. And those funds are, that, that particular audit looks at the actual expenditures versus the bond language to ensure that the projects that is being funded are approved by the voters in the bond language itself. And so with that, I would like the, take the opportunity to introduce our auditor, who is Stephen Roach, who's a CPA with the Stephen Roach Accountancy Corporation. Mr. Roach has conducted our audits for the district as of June 30th 2020. And it is for the 1920 fiscal years. And he has been auditing our district for a number of years. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Roach.
Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me out there. I'm going to go through the report rather quickly and just do a brief summary of the report. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to stick around and answer those. Similar to prior years, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the primary government, which is the Ross Valley School District. And that means that the financial statements contained within this report are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It is the best opinion that you can receive on your financial statements and the ones that you would like to see each year in your financial statements. As far as financial information included in the report is concerned, there were no audit adjustments this past fiscal year. So all of the financial information is basically the same information that you approved back as part of the unaudited actuals back in September. As far as there being no adjustments, this is usually a very good indication that business department is doing a very good job producing accurate information that you can base your financial decisions on. As far as financial highlights during the 1920 year, the overall net position of the district increased by approximately $1.5 million. And that's mostly responsible due to the receipt of $3 million of school facilities apportements in the county school facilities fund. The fund balance of the general fund decreased by approximately $825,000 this year. However, it did end the year with a reserve of 16.1%, which is still well above the 3% minimum allowed by the state. As far as long-term liabilities, they decreased by approximately $500,000 this year. At June 30, 2020, the long-term liabilities were approximately $88 million. Of that amount, approximately $60 million were related to bonds that are financed by the local property tax, property taxes of the landholders in the district. The remaining 28 million relates to compensated absences, OPEB liabilities and net pension liabilities, which are all pretty much financed on a pay-as-you-go basis. So as far as the amount that's being serviced by the general fund, it's not that significant for a district of your size. So that's very good indication. As far as average daily attendance, this past year, there was a decrease of 3988, which is something that you'll need to definitely keep your eye on. One thing that'll need to be done is to make sure your staffing is appropriate going forward as well as your budget being adjusted for any other declines. I'm not sure where you guys are for the 2021 year since I haven't been out there, but that's one area where you can get into trouble if you don't stay right on top of it. As far as findings and recommendations, I'm happy to report that for the second year in the row, the district had no financial reporting, federal compliance or state compliance findings to report. So that's very good. Overall, except for the impact of the declining enrollment and the decrease in the fund balance of the general fund, the report, I would, I would call to be a very positive audit report for the district. Other than that, you know, there's not too much to say since there were no findings to report. The financial condition, like I said, is, you know, kind of limited to the enrollment of the district, which, you know, you'll have to adjust for going forward. But other than that, I would like to thank everyone that helped with the audit this past year. The due date for the report was extended to March 31st. But due to the staff coming in and working with us, we were able to get it by the required statutory deadline. So I appreciate all their assistance this year. Any questions that can over?
Hi Stephen, this is trustee O'Neil. I just wanted to confirm that you said that our district did a very good job with accurate information in which to make future financial decisions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Incredible. Thank you.
No question from me. Thank you. Great job, Chris and team. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night.
Yeah. Appreciate all the hard work putting this in and the findings that you had around the enrollment. There, you know, that's, that's information that we've had in previous board meetings. So there's not any surprises there. We've, we've seen, you know, we've looked at the impact of COVID-19 and I think we'll have discussions going forward about welcoming and bringing families back into our, into our district going forward. So that wasn't any, any new information, but I appreciate that everything else looks great for especially two years in a row. So thank you.
Yep. I thank you.
All right. This is a item where we need to actually approve the audit reports. So if there are not any other questions, I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Don't move, Ryan.
I second Marie.
All right. Motion by Ryan and seconded by Marie, and we will go ahead with a vote. Ryan?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And Shelley? Aye. Okay. So the audited, the annual audit reports are approved and we can move to item number E3, which is recommended approval of the 2021 school accountability report cards for all of our schools. Sir, presentation?
Yes, no presentation, just a quick overview. And then time for any questions that that might be out there. I appreciate it so much. Trustees, colleagues, community. And the school accountability report card, since 1988, a state law has required that schools receiving state funding, prepare and distribute a SARC. We need to post it on our website and you can see it on our rossvalleyschools.org homepage. It has its own, its own menu item up at the top so that you can see actually a historical record of the last few years of SARC for each of our campuses. And the purpose of this SARC, it's really kind of like a report card for each of our schools and is to provide parents in the community with important critical information about each school. And it can be an effective way for a school to report on its progress towards achieving goals. And it's a, another public accountability measure where of course, everything that we do is in the public domain as it should be. We're a public institution and we're here for the public, by the public. And the SARC is one means by which we help our community see the inner workings of our school. So basically what you'll see in these reports is a general profile of the school and community that it serves, demographic data, the student body, school safety and climate information, academic data, class size, teacher and staff information, including credentialing, curriculum and instruction descriptions, professional development activities undergone by staff, fiscal and expenditure data and facilities related information. So, you know, it's, it's, it can be kind of dense reading, but it's really valuable. And what I want to do first of all is thank all of our site principals. And because each and every one of them worked very hard to update and make sure that the current SARC is accurate. And then also to our cabinet, CBO, Mr. Carson, Dr. Salinas and Ms. Wolcott also worked very hard on different aspects of the SARC to make sure that it was entirely accurate. And I did a good job of playing the, you know, the, the shepherd to make sure that everybody was making sure to update it and then get them prepared for this evening. And then pending approval from trustees, per state law, these must be posted to our website by February the 1st. So I wanted to make sure to open up the floor for any questions, if there were any.
So trustees, does anyone have any, any questions about these SARC reports? I know when I reviewed them, they really do look like a compilation of information from a number of different sources that many people have already seen. So it really feels and it seems like it's really a, a pulling together of information rather than any new information that people might not already have seen or known about with respect to the school. So I think it's a really nice overall snapshot of pulling together information from a lot of just information on a school basis. And I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
And just to, sorry, and one thing that I forgot to mention is that that there's also data that is pulled directly from the Department of Education database in, including the academic performance information, namely the CASP results, which for this past year, because this SARC reports on the 2019 20 school year, you will find no information because per the pandemic, there wasn't a CASP examination to be had. And so in future years, we hope returning to normal times, that performance data will be updated with actual information.
Thanks for highlighting that. Yes. Marie, did you have any?
I just want to comment to thank you very much for doing the work. I'm part of that process in my own work and I know how painful and how, you know, detail oriented that work is. So kudo to all the principals to have done it. Bravo. I know that's a step that's not fun, but it's important work to do. Thank you so much.
They told me it was fun.
Oh yeah, they were lying. They were lying to you. You were just amazed for there, but they were not honest here.
They're being polite. Okay.
Rachel or Ryan, is there any other questions before we move toward approving the SARC reports? And again, I really appreciate it is a lot of work, but it is that public transparency and they are very good snapshots of all of our schools. So if anyone is wondering about each of our schools, that really provides a great overview snapshot of all of our schools. So it's, it's work, but it's, it's, as you mentioned, it's a good public process.
Thank you.
If not, we can move on to approving them. Anyone want to make a motion towards approving of the SARC reports?
So moved.
All right.
I think we're.
I'll second. Sorry.
I think we're seconding.
I missed my mute button. Sorry.
Yeah, you have to unmute before you go ahead and second. No problem. Okay. So we've got Ryan, motion, Rachel, second. Go for a roll call. Ryan?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley? Aye. And Marie?
Aye.
Wonderful. Again, thank you so much for putting, pulling all that together. We've got those report cards approved and we can get them posted. Get them out there on those, on the websites. Thank you.
On time.
Thank you. And, and again, the biggest thanks to the team for all this work.
Fantastic. All right, we can move on to now the item number F, which is consent actions. And just wanted to check in with my colleagues to see if there's any one who has a clarification question or any item that they want to pull from consent or and hearing none. Then I think we can move forward. I also just want to, one thing I want to add into it is that I know that a lot of work goes into updating our board policies to make them fully compliant. And that looking at the California School Boards Association, School Board Association updates really is a great, that's where we're getting all of those updates. So I really do appreciate the staff time that's put in to make sure that all of our board policies are updated and compliant. And it's not just something that's put off because you never know when you're going to need to use those. So I appreciate that updating. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve consent.
I second.
All right, we'll take vote. Shelley, aye. Marie?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
And Rachel?
Aye.
Great. All right. Keep us moving right along for item number G, which is board business. We have about 30 minutes here and we normally start out with subcommittee updates and reports from trustees, although we postponed our board committee assignments from, from the last meeting to this meeting. So we didn't have any official assignments as of the last meeting. But if, are there any trustees, any other commit, any committee assignments or anything from anyone at this time? No? Okay. Then I'm just going to go ahead and move on to number two, which is the main part of our business right here is moving forward with our committee assignments. And so Marcy has put, had put together a document with an overview of all of the different committees, a little bit of his historical information.
It's Ryan. Um, how, do you guys feel okay moving on with this without Wes? I'd almost rather just push this back a month to include Wes.
I was actually, I go, I was thinking about the same thing, along the same thing, Ryan, because if he's not here.
Doesn't seem right.
Except, except if he has already said something, but I'm not so sure, right?
If there's any, anything that needs us to have a committee assignment before the next meeting, let's talk about that one. I would just feel more comfortable doing this with a full board meeting.
Sure. I think that's, I think that makes a lot of sense to be able to do that with a full board and with Wesley. I know he was pulled away at the very last minute today, right before this meeting. Marcy, I don't know if you, if there is any, if there's anything that you know of between now and our next meeting that we might need to address with the committee. Otherwise, I'm, I mean, I'm comfortable going ahead and putting this off until the next meeting as well.
I, I think it would be, it would perfectly make sense because we know what Wesley has previously committed to in terms of committee assignments, but he may want to make some changes or there may be other trustees who would like to do what Wesley was doing. And so I do think it makes sense to put it off. Let me just ask is Julia still here? Julia, when is the next equity committee meeting that we would have representation there? Is that before our February 9th meeting?
Um, we, that meeting is our peer and equity task force meeting. And I thought we had thought more about having our board members present for our district equity group. And we do not have a meeting scheduled for that group.
Perfect. Okay, great. So I'm looking at a lot of these in terms of district committees. Easily can wait until the February 9th board meeting. And then just historically in Ross Valley, we haven't had representation on two of the countywide committees. The E2, which is the, I lost it, the Efficiency and Effectiveness Collaborative, as well as the Golden Bell. And so most certainly I'm a representative for Ross Valley on the Golden Bell and I'll just continue to do that until we see if that's a committee that a trustee would like to join. But one of the things also is I know you all have had a chance to review this, but what we also want to be able to ensure is that you're not overstretched or overtaxed. And so that can be part of the conversation as well is the bandwidth for either adding the two new committees that we have here, the countywide efficiency and effectiveness and golden bell, or just sticking with the committees that, that we have before us and have historically participated on. So just more thinking as you're looking forward into the February 9th meeting.
And I'm, I'm looking because we received an email from Ken Lippi at MCOE about the J-LAC, next J-LAC meeting that happened to be the same day as the E2 meeting. And that would be February 10th. So that would be after the next February 9th. So it leave us, you know what I'm saying, like it's the next morning, but we're not missing much. If one of us is interested in looking into that, we can kind of has a placeholder for that. It's not until, it's not until then anyway.
Yeah. And I go to the J-LAC also.
Exactly. And it would be the day after. So that's, it doesn't seem that we are in any rush. I do agree.
Okay, that sounds great. And then maybe I'll work with Marcy between now and then to canvas everybody. And I know in person, sometimes people write down their, their interests and then turn them all in and we can kind of look at that and see where there's overlaps and gaps. So we'll, we'll be in touch about that.
Wes might be upset if he didn't have his shot at Jeepers. So let's just.
Policy committee, come on now. That's the most fun. Find everything to him since he was not here.
Oh, there you go.
That was the other idea. I could see where Ryan was going with that. Let's give everything to Wes.
Get it off the Wets. He can handle it. He's a very smart man.
All right. Well then, we will go ahead, given that it sounds like we're, we're good with moving forward and pulling that off from a vote. I don't know, Marcy, if there's anything formal we need to do other than just note that that item was postponed until the next board meeting. So no, no vote taken, discussion and then postponed.
And this isn't a formal action item anyway. It is just a discussion and decision as, as to which committees you all do. So I think perfectly noted to postpone this agenda item until the February 19th.
Okay, wonderful. All right. So then we can just move on to approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting for January 12th. Does anybody have any changes, additions or questions about those board meeting minutes?
No.
No.
Ryan, nope. All right.
I move approval.
There we go. We've got Ryan moving approval.
I'll second it.
We have a second. We have a second. Like an auctioneer. All right.
With mic on. Yes.
Yes. Okay. So let's go ahead with a roll call. Ryan? We're voting, Ryan. You have to unmute. Rachel?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Shelley? Aye. Okay. Now moving on to item number H, which is the superintendent and cabinet report.
Great. Well, thank you. Well, let's, good news is, let me start my video here, is with our rain this evening. The good news is the big winds haven't come in yet. We're able to continue our meeting. It looks like we'll be finished well before our major part of our storm hits. And so this evening related to the updates, Chris, do you have anything to add from your department?
I, yes, I just wanted to say that with the governor's January budget proposal, one of the things that he had added for the current year, actually not for next year, is in-person instruction grants. And there's been a fair amount of work by a number of staff throughout the district. And I also wanted to point out that even the school site specific protection plans, the SSSPPs are being updated by the principals and their staffs as well. So it's been a team effort in this endeavor as we move forward. And we just wanted to point that out and wish everybody a safe evening.
All right. Thank you, Chris. And Julia, any more updates to add with curriculum and instruction?
Yes, I have a couple of equity updates. Today I had a really wonderful first meeting with our group of teachers. It's going to be working on our equity book bundle project. So we have six teachers and across sites and across grade levels. And we're in the process of really thinking about how we want to select our books and kind of how to theme them. We're looking at the social justice standards for, from teaching tolerance and really identifying books that are going to help our teachers and help our students to talk with their students about race and the recognition that those are difficult conversations. And a number of us had had the opportunity last evening, and I sent this out to the community earlier in the week. Ibram Kendi spoke in the county. It was fabulous. And then I just totally had chill bumps at the end when he started talking about, and I wrote it down to what he said. He said, "We start reading books about kindness before the baby is born. By two to three years old, our babies are making decisions based on race." All the whole, we pretend, all the while, we pretend they don't have a racist understanding. If we aren't actively teaching them to be anti-racist. If we aren't actively teaching them to be anti-racist, what do you think society is teaching that white boy, that black girl? How is that impacting sense of self when they are five years old? Many of us recognize that we live in a racist society, but we send our kids out unprotected. To actively teach anti-racism, we are protecting our children against a racist society. I want parents to protect their children by teaching them how to be anti-racist." So really powerful words from Dr. Kendi and exciting work for us ahead. This is, this is all in the planning stages, but our hope is by the end of the year, we'll have a selection of books with some curriculum for each grade level and then we'll launch that curriculum in the fall. And then we're also excited that next week we have another parent equity task force meeting. And we have two fabulous parents who've stepped up to help lead that work. So we now have parents on the steering committee that are meeting with myself and with Marcy and with Dr. Erica Brown from Epic Education. So forward movement.
Excellent. Super important work. Thank you, Julia. Sure. All right. Dr. Selena Suster, any updates on the HR front?
Yes, thank you. And in human resources, we are already beginning to plan for next year. We are working and accepting from our faculty and staff their intent as to what next year is going to bring for them. Will they be returning? Will they be retiring? So we are beginning to gather that information. Additionally, we are in the middle of assignment monitoring. That's part of the credentialing process. And we've just finished up the 2019-20 reporting for the California State Assignment Accountability System, also known as CAL-SAS. And this is really where the CDE and CAL-PAD work together. And so now with that behind us, now we're moving and looking at the 2020, 2021 school year. So yes, we have a lot on our plate. Thank you.
All right. And Eric, anything to add from student services?
Absolutely. Student services won't be left out. First of all, super proud to report that back on January 13th, we had our second D-LAC meeting of the year. Again, we're going to continue to push to, to get as much participation as possible. But there are always really special opportunities to come together with our English language learning families. And special thanks to teachers Andrew Kastner, Kelly Eiler, Bonnie Mosher, who are ELS and reading and literacy specialists, really supporting those students and families day in, day out. And actually, one of the topics to Julia's point about Mr. Kendi's incredible conversation the other night via Marin County was multicultural literature and making sure that our schools are conduits for broadly representative content. Really terrific. And then we got some exciting things coming up in February. I think I need a drum roll. We have for fifth grade, family life is coming up. It'll be a little bit different because probably we're going to look to have it facilitated virtually, given the scenario we're in, but we're still committed to helping our fifth graders. You know, take that important step in life and learn those important lessons. And then also the California Healthy Kids Survey, which we haven't done in a little bit, will be coming to our fifth and seventh graders, which will be a really important metric in the realm of social emotional wellbeing, awareness and exposure to drugs and alcohol, school safety, school climate, peer relationships, relationships with staff, et cetera. So future board meetings, we'll be sharing out on those really important endeavors. And then last thing about D-LAC, our next meeting scheduled for March 3rd via Zoom at 6:00 PM.
All right. Thank you. All righty. And last but not least, superintendent update. We are very happy to announce that we have started our new student registration for the 21-22 school year. Online registration began on January 13th and our in-person registration begins on February 1st. And so our district website, rossvalleyschools.org, go to the parents button, drop down the student registration and families can find out all they need to know about the process for registration with the two components of online and in-person. And then we have also kicked off and have held two of our TK through five, or sorry, kindergarten through fifth grade preview nights. And so Wade Thomas and Manor have already gone and up next, or I'll do these by alphabetical by school. Brookside is the 28th of January, Hidden Valleys is the 27th. And then we also have TK preview night. And the reason we do that one separate from our K through fifth grades is that there's a three-month band of kids who fall into that range of being eligible for TK. And so traditionally in the district, how TK looks varies from year to year. For a number of years, it was one classroom with all of the TK kids in it at one school. Then we had enough students for two TK classrooms. And then one year with Manor, Manor's enrollment in kindergarten and their member of TK kids were total kids. And Manor's TK kids were able to have a TKK combo there. Then it was at Hidden Valley one year. And then this year, of course, with the pandemic and just the way that our numbers fell, we have all of our TK kids and TKK combos. There, due to the high number of kindergarten students had Wade Thomas, unfortunately, they weren't able to have a TKK combo. So our kindergartners, or sorry, our transitional kindergartners from Wade Thomas are attending at Manor in the TKK. So wanting to have a district-wide event with our TK preview night and that will be jointly facilitated by Christie Fish and Judith Berry, two principals. And of course, all of our preview nights are by Zoom. Nothing's in person right now. And White Hill coming up, we just started this two years ago, is holding a sixth grade preview night for all our incoming fifth graders. It's a big move for families or for us, our students to move from fifth to sixth. And sometimes the wonder and the, what is White Hill all about? And so it's a great opportunity to have the families and be able to engage and learn about the sixth grade program, but also more about White Hill. So those are coming up and just yes, just want to plug their Artists Among Us event tomorrow night. That's a Zoom event. And if you haven't purchased your tickets yet, you can go to artistsamongus.bpt.me and to purchase a, a family tickets there. So that looks like it's a great event. And they're also looking forward to having more in the future with potentially some of our student artists and our, our local in-school artists as well. So I think that'll be a great event to highlight all the work and support that YES does for our schools and our, and the arts. So accessing just, not just art in its form of drawing and painting, but also music. So the arts in and of itself. So that should be a fantastic event. And then last but not least, we haven't heard yet, but we did join together with the YMCA to apply for two different types of grants. One from the county, one from the state, to be able to have our learning hubs in our school district for any families who need to have extended time on our campuses until we can get back into our full instructional day. So looking forward to hearing more about the results of those grant funds. And as soon as we have the information, be sharing that out. So I think that's it for cabinet.
That sounds great. And I was going to say, I think if you want to, you could go ahead and stop sharing because if there's any questions on this, and then we have the next couple of items or just discussion with the board here at the close. So the board can come back on, on visual. And then if there's anyone who has any questions or any comments on the, on the debrief there, I mean, on the, on the, yeah, on the superintendent and cabinet update. I had a quick, I had a quick question about the healthy kids. Is that a statewide or a countywide, like the timing of it? Is it every, every school in every county is going to be doing that all at the same time on the healthy kids assessment? You know, oh, I don't know if the staff probably left.
Sorry, I apologize. Repeat that question. My bad.
No problem. The healthy kids, the chicks assessment, that's done statewide or countywide at the, all at the same time? Or do we?
So what schools do is they contract with WestEd who facilitates and curates the survey. Schools and districts choose the modules they want to use. And then they work with WestEd to essentially package the, the data and to how they want to present it and share it. And so it's, it's something that's not required by any means. There of course are many ways for, for schools to generate local surveys. They, they could be quick little Google ones that ask some of the same questions. But the, the advantage of working with WestEd is the ability to compile longitudinal data to really track these cohorts and to be able to just leverage, you know, their different, to also be able to, to look at broader countywide and statewide data to, to look at how we're doing on these different fronts. And so it'll be really great. And you know, we're going to make sure that we're, we're setting up a good foundation for years to come.
Look forward to, looking forward to seeing that when it comes out. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other wrap-up comments from any of the other board members on anything that was brought up in the cabinet or superintendent? All right. Okay. Well then we can move into our meeting review section in looking at future board topics and board direction and meeting debrief. So and is there anything else other than, you know, maybe looking at the healthy kids survey coming up or Marcy that, that you need, you need to have a heads up on? Otherwise, we can just go into the meeting debrief.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So how, meeting debrief, if there's anything in terms of the process of the meeting or a debrief that board members have that they want to add in at this time, we can talk about that. I know I had one thought when we were talking about the, when you were talking about the D-LAC committee and the equity committee. And I know Marie, when we had moved to having our cameras on for conversation, Zoom has added a caption, a closed caption tool to that. So I was just going to recommend as far as a meeting debrief that we might look in, might look into that because I don't know if that might help. I know that in other venues that I've been in, the closed captioning can help second language or English language learners, as well as hearing, anybody with a hearing issue, and it is a new option. So that was my only other meeting debrief possibility to look into.
Thank you. And also to tag on to that, I would be interested in like finding a, like maybe a Spanish translation. Because I've been going to a lot of MCOE meetings where there's been a translation available. And I don't know necessarily if that would be necessary, but I think it would be helpful to have it, especially since we have recordings of all of our meetings. I don't know exactly what would be involved in getting that translation for these meetings or the recordings maybe. So it's available.
Right. Any other thoughts otherwise? We can go ahead.
Yep. I did have actually one lingering question about the presentation on the return to school. I don't know if this is an okay time to ask. When is the, the, the return to an extended date planning to start?
For the elementary?
Yeah.
We're working on that. We do think it will be soon. But the work that we're going to be continuing on with our teacher leaders and determining and finalizing the, the exact schedule. So that will be coming out shortly, well before, we're planning on having it finalized so that it comes out before our next meeting. And so it will be emailed out to all of our families once we do have that date set.
So we'll get another update then at the next meeting on where we're at with that.
Yes, at that point. And it could be that the information is already known, it's already been out. But you'll of course receive that communication as well. And so again, at our next meeting, we won't wait for the next meeting is what I'm saying to be able to.
The latest.
Yeah, yeah.
In the update number 14.
Yeah. I know with people with kids, if we know, hey, that childcare situations might change. I like having a heads up and it helps.
Sure. Yeah, we will give, we're hoping a couple of weeks' notice for our families because of that particular need to make some changes. And then we do have written into our MOU with the teachers is that if we're going to be making any changes, that we give them at least a week's notice. And so for sure, yeah, we'll be moving forward now.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there's any other meeting debrief comments, I think we can go ahead and adjourn this meeting. And we will all be back for the next meeting, which is on February 9th, correct?
That is the next meeting. Yep.
Well, thank you all. It's good to see you. Stay, stay as dry as you can as we get that new rain coming in here tonight, which we greatly need. So enjoy listening to the rain, but don't float away.
Thank you, Shelley.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.